Jim, we're good to go. I'd like to call it the order, the first ever virtual town council meeting for the town of Bucksport. It is April 2nd, 2020. Could I have a roll call, Jacob?
Mark Easton?
I'm here.
Jim Morrison?
Yes.
Paul Bissonette?
Here.
Peter Stewart?
Here.
Ann Ormsby?
Here.
Kathy Downs?
Here.
And Ed Rankin?
Here.
All right, before we get going, hopefully on your screen you see an email address for the town manager Sue Lassard, and also a phone number. For this meeting tonight, where we don't have the public with us, and all the councilors are in different locations across the town, if you have a question, you can call the town office with a number that's shown, or you can email Sue at her email address, which would be the best way. It's slassard@buxsportmaine.gov. And she will be able to get the questions to us when that time comes. We ask that you be patient. She is the only one that will be answering the phones and answering the emails, and we will go on with the agenda. So hopefully everybody can see that. And the next item on the agenda is any recognitions? I don't believe we have any. Consider minutes of previous meetings. We have council minutes from March 12th, 2020. Infrastructure committee minutes from March 12th, 2020. And service committee minutes from March 12th, 2020. How would the council like to go? When we do have a motion and a second, I'm going to ask that each councillor take a second because there is a little bit of a delay, so I'll take a motion on that.
Motion approved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor will be done by a roll call, Jacob?
Easton?
In favor.
Jim Morrison?
Accept.
Paul Bissonette?
Yes, approve.
Peter Stewart?
Approve.
Ann Ormsby?
Approve.
Kathy Downs?
Approve.
And Ed Rankin?
Approve.
Two main items.
Thank you, motion passes. Item five is we resolve and review, our receive and review correspondence. I don't believe we have anything. Item six, ordinances to consider or introduce. We don't have anything. Item seven will be discussion items. The first one is the pool information update. Sue?
What you have, what you have is information regarding the cost of the repair option for the pool. That repair option includes a number of items that would be utilized if, in the future, the council decided to construct a new pool as well. And in reviewing what has been proposed, around $30,000, I think, is the portion that would have been utilized again, but the remainder of the $116,000 plus is are things that in the future could be utilized. This, uh, one of them, I wanted to do several emails as well as this information. One indicated that the designer, the person had mislabeled a question that $10,000 was for typing, not for what was previously, was identified before. And I did ask the question about the length of time that a repair option might be successful, and that was answered that what was, had been, that there might be more work necessary on the tank and the filter house this year, if that was, if that was the only thing that was identified as something that might be a future concern for the continued operation of the pool, if the council went with this repair option proposed.
All right, I'm going to go around the room. Danny, any questions?
No.
Ed, any questions?
Um, not so much a question as maybe just a statement of, with everything going on, the uncertainty of us not knowing what's going to happen, it may be an option to, uh, sideline it until next year and then do it, do it right however we're going to do it, if we're playing to the free bill. Just a thought. Jim? I think the pool ought to be taken care of.
This year, first of all. Second of all, I found that to be a little bit high. It's my estimate.
I agree that the pool should be taken care of this year. And we should move forward with getting it going so we can get it up running by July 1st, if at all possible.
Mark?
I would agree with Ed, you know, that maybe we ought to look at enabling it until we know what's going to happen, because if, otherwise, we've got to make a decision to go one way or the other, because to make that temporary repair and then not be able to use it doesn't, wouldn't make sense to me.
Paul?
I have, I have nothing to add except to say that, well, I guess I do have something to add. Given the state of where the, the price tag came in, and that so much of what would be repaired could then be used in the future, I would be in favor of getting the repairs underway and, um, and would vote to do so.
Danny, anything else on that?
Yeah, I think, I agree. Let's get, let's get the pool going. Let's, let's move forward with it if we can.
Sue, do you have anything from anybody in the town?
I have no calls and I have, I have no calls and no emails at this time, but we have, you haven't asked for their input yet. You had said you were asking them to, as subjects were introduced to contract.
Thank you. If anybody has, if anybody has any comments on the pool, now would be the time to email or call in. I'll go around the room one more time with the councilors. Something to do with the tank, would that be something that could be done as the repairs are going on this year, so we wouldn't have to dive into it again next year?
That certainly, excuse me.
No, go ahead, Sue.
That certainly would be an option. I have all the bidding documents that were prepared by the designer for this repair that are ready to go out tomorrow or Monday, if you want to, if you decide to move forward with it, vote to move forward with this, the document's there. But certainly adding that as a side option to see what the price tag on this. I would also note for the council that there's $93,000 in the pool reserve account, which would only leave a relatively small amount need to come from fund balance to do these repairs, $26,000 give or take. But that's not, the majority of the repairs could be funded from the reserve that's set aside for the building now.
Jim, anything else?
Yeah, we've been authorized a, a million dollars to do the pool, and this amount, as, as has been said, would take care of some of the things that we'd have to be doing if we went with a new pool. And I specifically asked the question, would this repair put us in a situation where we wouldn't have to repair the pool again in a year or a couple of years or anything like that? And he said, yes, it would be, you know, as good as any, any repair could ever be done. It wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a part repair and left for the rest.
Mark?
Um, I mean, if that's the will of everyone, I'm, I'm fine with that. One other thing to consider is how, if the pool doesn't open, and I asked Sue about this, and maybe she could speak to it, but how that might affect the why and, and what we contract on purposes.
Sue?
One contract includes discrete elements that if they operate, we pay for them. We had it for the skating. If they, if they had ice skating, we paid for the additional. If they didn't, we didn't. The pool is the same way. If that element isn't in, doesn't happen as part of what they're, we don't pay for it if it doesn't occur. So that they're all components of their annual cost, but if they don't, if they don't happen, we don't pay for them.
Paul?
Nothing additional to add.
And the, and the last thing I would add is, is, again, where we're at today, I think any chance we can do to, to do something to get the town going back where we were is a good thing to do, so. Do you have anything, Sue, from any, anybody from town?
There's no phone calls, and wait a minute. Nancy Minus said, "The audio is coming and going, so it is difficult to respond." Jim Morley, if you heard that comment, can we figure out why that is, please?
I think it might be yours, Sue. Yours sounds
Yep.
The worst.
Of course, it's me. Hold on. What? No.
I can hear you, I can, I can hear you, yes. All right, if we have nothing else on the pool, will we have a motion or will we have a resolve the next time, Sue? Is that where we're at?
No, what I would like you to do, based on this discussion, is to authorize me to put this out to bid, so that you can have a resolve with the results of that bid or upcoming meeting.
Okay, I'm going to go around the room. Danny? Do you want to authorize the town manager to go forward with a bid process? Dan?
Yep.
Ed?
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Can we just get a motion and a second first for me, please?
Absolutely.
I make a motion to approve, or to, um, to bring the resolve and put it out to bid.
Second.
We have our motion and our second. Danny?
Approved.
Ed?
Uh, yep, I'll approve.
Jim?
Approved.
Kathy?
Approved.
Mark?
Approved.
Paul?
Approved.
And Peter approves. You all set with that, Sue?
I'm all set with that. Um, Jim Morley, if you're listening, I'm getting messages that says it sounds like an echo on my, on my part. Is anyone getting an echo?
It's very slight, Sue, but you can be understood, at least, at least for me. There is a little bit of an echo. It just sounds tinny. It, it sounds like the microphone in your computer might be a little tinny. It's probably hardware, is my guess.
All right, the next item on the agenda, whoop, sorry.
Okay.
You're awesome.
Almost. I have a solution. I should shut my mic off when I'm not talking because I'm feeding back into the grid. I apologize.
All right. The next item is the cemetery committee update. I believe Kathy?
Yes, um, we had a meeting on March 9th, and we were continuing our discussion on a visit to the cemetery, which we had scheduled a visit on March 17th, but however, that never came because of the virus. So we're at a hold at this point, but on the 9th, we had a good turnout for the meeting. We had a lot of good positive feedback, and we're still moving forward. So, and we do have a meeting scheduled for April 6th, which is Monday, so we will have to to cancel that one and reschedule at a later date.
Okay.
Mark, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't, Kathy. Um, no, I don't. I don't.
Thank you.
Really quick, any questions? Danny?
Nope.
Ed?
Nope, I'm good.
Jim?
Nothing.
Paul?
All set.
Next item is the manager proposals to assist the residences and businesses. Sue?
Well, I want to start out by thanking the council for listening to these proposals. They're difficult. If it were okay, if I put forward some creative ideas for how we might, at the local level, try to mitigate a bit of the pain that some of our most impacted residents and businesses are feeling, as well as address, kind of better help our food cantrys and homeless shelter and our seniors to encourage them to participate in the meal programs. And, and I truly appreciate that you said you would listen. I, I did not take that as approval. I did not take that as anything other than the willingness of, uh, my council to listen to what I had to say, and I, I really appreciate, however the vote goes, whatever your decisions are, I want you to know that I appreciate the opportunity to at least present these ideas. All paid for at Bucksport and it's perfect. It's not to solve every problem in the world or to attempt to do that. What it is, is a way, um, in my mind, to indicate to the most impacted of our residents and businesses that the town is in support of them. The residents of this community have been through a huge amount in the last five years, and the loss of the mill, the uncertainty of all that, and their response during all of that time has been nothing but courageous and brave and forward-thinking. And when there was no, nothing but a shell sitting at the other end of Main Street, small businesses took a chance on Bucksport, and they've moved there downtown. And as a result, I I don't want us to treat this, them, as if it's the end of the world, because it isn't. There, there is a path forward through it, and we, we need to forge that path, I believe. And part of that is providing hope and faith in that, and the members of our community that we're here for them. And as I said, it's not a law for anybody, but it is, um, I think, a, a way to keep our sense of community intact when we're isolated. And I have to add that, and, and you folks know, but for those at home though, that I received a call from Andy Silvernail, I think you know, or know of, who was was born and raised in Bucksport. He and his wife Shelby, and they, they called because they want to help. And they had offered to, um, supplement this proposal if you vote to adopt it with an additional $60,000. Because they want to be part of it, and which I thought was a very generous offer, and would allow the program to be more substantive for people at the local level. And I, I'm happy to answer any questions. As I said, I had it for several days, and I had outlined the same basic pieces of it, so we could go, we didn't discuss it, we didn't, it wasn't, it was just, will you lis- listen, so, so. This is the idea, and this is what I'm looking for.
Thanks, Sue. At this time, I'll ask folks to email in or call. Email would be preferable, please, and I'll go around the room. Danny, any questions?
Um, I, I have quite a few questions, and, and I guess to start going through it, um, looking down through the several parts, I have it up on my other computer here, so I'm looking at it. Looking at first the, the microloans and moving the microloans, I think that's a great idea. I think that not only can we help those businesses by taking that burden off, but moving to the end, and then I think we should also reassess it as we, as we go along to see if in, in May, you know, if we have to do it again because of the situation, then, then we reassess it then. The, the vouchers, I'm, I'm interested to see how that's going to work and how we would, we would do something like that, i- if it's on a, on a, as needed per, the layoff notice, or how, how you would set that up. The so, wh- when it comes to the local business owner and the 500 a month grant to help the overhead costs in April and May, I, I really feel like we need some more input from Rich Ratella. I feel like he needs to really be in on this conversation to, to figure out, first off, how will that impact those businesses? Because, yeah, we do have a responsibility as a town to, to take care of our citizens, but we also have a fiscal responsibility to our town to make sure that we're putting the money in the right places when we do that. Um, and if, and how much this will help, also what other options we have out there. I know that today, um, we had the economic injury disaster loan came out, the payroll protection program came out, the small business debt relief program came out, the fame loan, loan, loan options came out. Um, as part of that, I know that, um, one of them is, uh, the, uh, the, let me pull this up. As part of the economic injury disaster loan, it's, it's a loan that they can get with $10,000 advancement within 72 hours. And so I'm just, I, I feel like we need to dive into some of those a little bit more before we, we jump to, to put the money out there. Um, and just see who, will it help? How much will it help? What, what input does Rich have in those things? I am in full support of the delivery services. I'm in full support. I know that the schools are doing that now. I'm, I'm doing part of that every day. I'm also in full support of the seniors and, and getting the, the, taking that burden off them. And I think we need to look at how best we can help home, home and Bucksport community concerns. And is, is this the best help we can do for them? It, it, you know, just handing a check, or do we need to get more information about volunteers? I feel like, from what I'm seeing and what I'm reading from you, Sue, is that they need help. They need more people. They need more feet on the ground to help them. Um, and, you know, traditionally, a lot of those people are higher-risked people that are there doing that. So can we get some of the lower-risked people into helping doing that? And so, yeah, I, I want to hear what other people have to say, too, but those are just some of my ideas.
Okay, Sue, do you have any comments on what Danny said?
Your mic's off.
Everyone should mute their mic when they're not talking, because that's providing, it's everybody's, but not just mine, that is, is providing. So, and just lost, okay, he's back. We almost lost councillor Eastman, he's back. So, uh, the I respect, I, I had been in consultation with Rick on this program. Rich has provided a list of businesses, list has been made, Rich has been making the contracts in, in regard to what's necessary. And, and while I understand that there are many programs out there that are going to happen, nothing is happening now. Everything's at some point in the future, and at some level of government, it isn't personal to the people of this community. And, and that's, that's the basic reason that I put this. The state, the feds, no one has the ability to put the money in the hands of a business or, or a resident who has lost their job and can't get through to unemployment because their phones are down, and they're, they don't have computer access, but the town does. And that, that, that's entirely why. But it's not that I haven't been in consultation with Rick on this, because I've had all the way through and things with this.
Okay, Ed?
Overall, I'm in favor of the whole plan. I have a couple of concerns that Danny did on this, on the vouchers and for the business. How they qualify, I'm just not quite sure how we're going to do that. I'm sure we can do it, I just, I just don't know what qualifies them. I mean, because I think every, well, most every business has taken a big hit, but if they're still doing, you know, paying the bills and making payroll and enough to pay the bills, I mean, that's a blessing right now, but, um, I, I would like to see what, what's going to qualify them. And as far as the vouchers, that's a great idea. Uh, but again, do they, do they bring in a unemployment notice, or I'm just not sure how we're going to do that. I'm in favor of everything else. I, I think it is our responsibility as a council, as the town, to help these people. I mean, these businesses are kind of the backbone, and they, I'm sure they do need help. I don't know if they need help right this moment where it's relatively new, or if a month or two from now would be better time to help them. I don't know. I'd need to get more feedback from, from the, um, I know on my, on our aspect here at the garage, it's, you know, it's definitely affecting us. It's getting slower, but as long as we can maintain, we're doing all right. One thing I would like to add, though, is where the Silvernails were so generous with, you know, $60,000, I don't think we should look at that as, you know, this is only going to cost us like $55,000 now. I, I think theirs should be above and beyond everything that if this is going to be 115, then we should look at, okay, then we have 175, not just taking that money and to, to take less from us, you know, so that we have to contribute less. I don't, I don't think that's fair on the I don't, I don't think that's fair on the, on their gener-, you know, their generosity. We need to be thankful that they were willing to do that and, and that's, that's my concerns right now.
Thanks. And I am fairly certain that that was above and beyond the 115. That was sort of a, a match type thing. Sue?
What I was gonna say was, um, Mr. Silvernail indicated that the $60,000 would be given if council approved the $115,000. It was not to make it smaller. His goal was to make the program more robust so it would be more meaningful for what we're doing.
To Ed's question, do you have a, an idea of how you may, um, figure out who's who?
Who's who? Yes, we had, um, talked about the, uh, people who don't have jobs get layoff notices. They get some from their, so they're not employed or something that says their, their hours have been greatly reduced. And a copy of that is what I was going to ask be submitted in order to qualify. And it's per family, not per person. So if it's, it, that, and only because it, it's not possible to get in the weeds with how many people are in all of that. The, the general amount was a hundred dollars, which maybe if, if the council approved it could be adjusted based on the generosity of Silvernails, but that it would be based on a layoff notice or a notice from an employee of significantly reduced hours, that is what we would ask for.
And for the business?
The business piece, um, Rich has already developed a survey to go to all the businesses that get to the heart of impact. And we would use the results of those in order to determine, um, you know, people who are completely closed, people who've laid everybody off, people who aren't, you know, that, those are, and then those who have, because they're public facing businesses and they can't do what they normally do, those kind of things would be more the criteria. But, um, Rich has the survey already prepared in the event that the council approves this in order to determine the level, the level of impact to businesses in order to, just to figure it out.
Okay, thanks. I'll come back around again, so we're just to kinda keep moving down through here. Um, Jim?
Yeah. We have, on October 10th, the council got together and determined that they would follow the, uh, regulations that the DHHS put in front of you to, uh, determine how much you could give to people, uh, in case of need. And there's eight pages of, uh, information that they have to fill out to get those things. Uh, those numbers are based on the, uh, mean household income for this area. I think that those numbers should be followed. Uh, and I think that yes, add some more money into what you have in, in that amount that you wanna give and, uh, uh, go by those guidelines that are already in place.
Is that for general assistance?
That's general assistance and the income is based on the prior 30 days. That's a, that's a state program, the state regulations are that it's based on income for the prior 30 days and there's after. Many of the people who've lost their jobs would not qualify simply based on the fact that their income would not meet those guidelines for 30 days ago when they had a job. And for people living paycheck to paycheck, that would eliminate them from eligibility, but not from need. And, uh, the state's guidelines are, that, that if you choose to go by the state general assistance guidelines in order to make that a qualification, that you're not going to help anyone.
Um, I had some of the same questions that both Dan and Ed had. Um, on the vouchers, now that is for April and May. Um, considering, um, that the virus hasn't really hit the area yet, what happens for maybe we need it in June and July? Is that where we can dip into, um, what the Silvernails have appropriated or? I guess that's my question on that. I just, I just wanna, you know, look out for all the citizens like we all are trying to do, but you know, as we move forward, if it's not just for April and May, are we gonna have enough to continue further down the road?
Sue?
I mean, I, I needed to unmute. This, this is awkward. I talk with my hands, I don't click mute buttons. But the, um, in putting together this proposal, I, I had no idea that the Silvernails were going to offer anything or even reach out and wanna support it. Their offer is to augment this plan, this $115,000 plan as part of that. My original proposal, when I made it, was done with the understanding that it's affordable for the town if we do it for April and May and it is also affordable if we had to extend it to June and July without exceeding the $250,000 program limit that the town has and without impacting the town's financial position in a way that would impact next year's budget or would impact the mill rate. And so it, it wasn't, throw it all out there at the beginning. It's a more measured approach that leaves in reserve the ability to respond in subsequent months if that is necessary. But, but the program is called a bridge because eventually the state and the feds should be able to catch up with some of this. It's just, it's not gonna happen quickly, that's all.
Mark?
Thank you.
A, a back one. Um, I, I do think we're fortunate to be in a position to help the community. Um, one thing I'd like to add on the, the, uh, business side of it, you know, for years we've given away lots for the, the kind of money we're talking about here to people that no weren't necessarily in the community. So I think it's a good time to, to open up and help the, the general business community downtown. Um, and I agree with Sue, I do think the feds will catch up and be able to help us later, but now's the time to try to make sure people are safe. That's all.
Thanks. Paul?
Um, I, I support th- these proposals for, for a number of reasons. I think, um, kind of from a big picture perspective, you really have, and Sue alluded to this, you have two business, types of businesses here in town. Um, you have the businesses that were here, for example, when the mill closed and, and stayed here, stayed open, um, when they had every excuse in the world to leave. Um, you have the businesses that have come to Bucksport since the mill closed, um, when they had every excuse in the world not to come to Bucksport, um, and have invested, um, and taken a chance on Bucksport, whether they were here and didn't leave or whether they can. Um, I think the approach of this is very, A, proactive and when, um, that should be rewarded in government, that should be applauded in government. And I applaud our town manager for this proposal. Um, and, and it comes from the perspective of a bridge, of bridging, um, uh, the, the period of time that will elapse hopefully, um, only over April and May. Um, but I'm pleased to hear, um, and because that proactivity needs to continue here at this level, that perhaps if it needs to go into June and Ju- July as Kathy asked, um, that we're prepared to do so. Um, the Silvernail's generosity, um, has been seen multiple times in this community. And while I'm not surprised that they're stepping up again, I'm, I'm very pleased to see that they're doing so. Um, I, I, I think the proactivity that we've seen from Rich, from Sue on this, um, uh, speaks volumes as well, um, and that we need to be, uh, we need to get this going, we need to do it now. Um, there's got to be some level of government, um, that can find itself in a position to do something now and do it. And, um, I support this wholeheartedly.
Thanks. Um, part of our fiscal responsibility is being good stewards with the, with the, with the finances that we have and the majority of those finances or, or a lot of those finances do come from the businesses in, in the form of taxes. Um, and if they're not able to sustain, um, we are going to, to lose some of that fiscal, um, income that we have. Um, so I think we have to make sure that we don't just look at this as a strictly fiscal, um, are we spending the money? Are we spending money because it, it's, it's money that, that we have done well, the folks before us did well to, 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 to bridge these things. Again, I, I will go to the bridge thing also. Um, for those of us that were here, we were fortunate five years ago to have, to have this, to have these funds here to help, um, when we had something else happen to the town. And, and, and I'm gonna echo what Paul said, no, just, I'm gonna echo it because you said it so eloquently and I appreciate how you said it. Um, that is what we're here to do, so. And we'll go back around the room again. Um, Dan? And I, check, check real quick. Sue, do you have anything from any of the citizens yet? I know that there were some emails from folks, I think, hopefully everybody read the emails that came in from some folks, um, that were all in support of the, the program.
We have, I, you hadn't opened it up for input from the public yet, so I, I have gotten...
Oh, I, I did right from the start.
Oh, okay, I apologize. So I had feedback from, um, hold on, let me get my messages up there. Um, uh, the application process, this is from Poswings and Things. The application process for these programs is extensive and to help our loans that have interest and for many businesses, another loan is not an answer for them right now because having to pay a back end for those that are no end, that are forgivable, they require that, that personnel be kept in place, which they can't use right now because their businesses are not closed, so it's, they're, they're, they're not qualified for that kind of activity. And there's no determined timeline when some of these, uh, are gonna be made available. And that says as a member of this community, a taxpayer and an employer for local residents, we need help now to keep going. They've already lost $10,000 in business since the close of this.
Wow.
That was Poswings and Things. It's their busy season, April became, you know, when people travel, none of that is happening. Um, so that's, that's what I received there.
Sue? All right, I'm gonna go to Danny.
Yeah. So do we, do we have help with, in, for these businesses when it comes to doing these loan applications and, and figuring that stuff out? Do we have any service that, that can help them do that?
Rich, my on. Yeah, Rich, Rich will be helping. Um, Rich is working remotely, but is, is in constant contact with businesses about what, he's constantly putting out information and offering for them to contact him for assistance in the same way that I have offered in some of my messages. If people don't have a computer and they, and I read today that the phone lines at the Department of Labor had been down most of the week. So what happens to people who can't apply? I've offered people that if, if you can't figure it out, if you don't have the resources, call and we'll help you. In the same way that I've reached out to people who've traveled to please stay home in quarantine, if, if you can't find a way, call and we'll find a way to, to get help. So yes, um, Rich is being very proactive on getting us information out there, offering to help, um, answering a lot of questions.
I just get nervous that, you know, over two months, a thousand dollars isn't gonna do much. And, and I know every little bit counts in, in tough times, but I just, we, we gotta make sure that we have help for those businesses to apply for those, those bigger... It's, it's ten grand upfront, like, given to you within 72 hours. And I think that could help some of our businesses and it's, and it's completely forgivable. Um, so I mean, just if we can find a way to make sure that we have, whether it's a help center, a call in place, or how they can directly ca- call someone to get help with these loans, um, I think that would be huge for people. Cause I know when it comes to filling out loan applications and doing that stuff, it's confusing. It gets, it gets to be a lot, so.
I can tell you that, that we will be, um, answering those calls, Rich will be assisting for that, um, through this period remotely because that's where we are in the world right now. But the, the generosity of the Silvernails allow more generosity in the programs. And as I said before, I know that that hundred dollars isn't gonna fix anybody, but for many of our small business, it's, it's a chunk out of overhead that could be helpful. But with the Silver, Silvernails funding, there's every possibility that that could be more, um, depending on what council, whether you decide to move forward with this program or whether you don't. But it, it could be more meaningful in terms of, of food aid for people waiting and for businesses as well.
Danny, did you have anything else?
Not right now.
Ed?
Um, yeah, I absolutely wanna support what Dan just said is, we do need to offer the, the help, that people can come to the town office and I'm sure Sue does a great job already and, uh, cause I'm sure it is overwhelming to a lot of people when you're trying to read through all this information that's coming out from the federal government and trying to sort out what you can do and what you can't do. And I know to a lot of these peoples, uh, I wouldn't wanna do it either, that if you take another loan and you're doing, you know, businesses way down, a loan's the last thing you wanna do. Um, I, I have got a lot of calls and emails in the past couple of days. Lot of private, you know, businesses and private residents that are in support of this. Um, I, I have had no one contact me that's not in favor of it. Um, I would, on a side note, I would just like to say, uh, just a personal opinion that if, now is the time that for people that need help, not to be ashamed, don't be embarrassed, go get the help. Contact any of, well, I won't speak for all the councils, but you can contact me at erankin@bucksportmaine.gov. You can call the town office. Get in touch with any of us and we can try to give you in the direction you need to be. Um, having said that, I also, another personal note, would just like to encourage people that if they can, this is businesses and citizens and everybody, if you can, I, I just strongly believe that you really should try to keep all your bills paid and stay up on things, cause I'm just afraid this might bite people in the end if we get, if it gets too far ahead of any of us, that at some point they're gonna say, okay, now you owe everything that's been forgiven for the past three, four months. Not that that'll happen, I have no idea, but, um, guess I'm paranoid in that sense, so. That's it. I think it's a great plan.
Thanks. Jim?
Yeah, I, I kinda gotta know what's, what's the end game? What, what happens when this money runs out? Do we appropriate another, uh, supply of money for this purpose or do we think that it's not gonna run out? Do we have any idea, uh, when all this is gonna end? Are we gonna end up like Kathy said, with another couple of months of, of coming up with another bunch of money? Uh, what, do we decide that, uh, subject A needs $5,000 and subject B only needs $1,000? How do we know, you know, what, what we're getting for input from the people? Uh, what kind of paperwork setup do we have so people can? What kind of paperwork setup do we have so people can all be equally treated?
Sue?
As I said before, the proposal is based on equal distribution and it's based on a proposal that's doable over the course of four months if necessary, but in pieces because we don't know the answer. It's going to pass, but I'm not, my crystal ball is broken. But the idea, I can tell you that for most communities right now, they're talking about extending, not paying their bills, they're talking about all sorts of things because they have no reserves. They have nothing to, as a hedge, even for a month or two months without regular influx. And in Bucksport, because of the leadership over decades, has some choices that most communities don't. And the idea is that this, this program is mapped out with a potential for four months, but approved in two. Because I'm not asking you for four months, I'm telling you that what is in front of you can be sustainable over four months without exceeding the $250,000 tax that you have on private shareholders without council approval, without. So making it smaller to start with, to go over a longer time to stay under that $250,000 tax, then makes it worthless. So, and it's a bridge. These other programs in some fashion, unemployment will get at some point where it went from 684 claims in one week to 45,000 this week. That's a catch-up that they're not, it's not going to happen in five minutes, it's just not. So doing some, or at least people can eat or that kind of thing is a responsible thing to do. But as I said, it's mapped out on four months. Could the town, if it wanted to, go more than four months? Yes, but could you do it legally? No, there's a $250,000 tax on where you can go with projects without photo approval. So that's what I'd be.
Kathy?
Gee, I don't have any questions or anything to add. I think this is well put together and everything has been explained that I had questions on. And I just feel we should move forward with this. I think it is our duty to do that.
Mark?
I would agree with Kathy, you know, time's of the essence and, you know, our community needs our help.
Paul?
Just Sue alluded to it and we're in a very fortunate position to find ourselves in a place that we can even have a conversation about doing this. There are so many communities and people that, you know, in other communities that I've talked to and Sue alluded to it too, that just can't, that couldn't, their concerns are far different. And the reason that we're, is so fortunate are the people that we're talking about helping. And I'll say it again, it gives me hope at least anyway, that there is a function of government that can do this immediately for the people that it serves. It's about time.
The unfortunate thing about being the chair is I get to go last and you guys have said everything there is to say, so, you know, I do appreciate all the input. Does anybody else have anything else for input? Danny?
Nope, I'm all set.
Ed?
No, I'm good.
Jim, did you get your question answered?
I'm fine.
Okay. Sue, do you have any other questions from the town?
I have, I have a statement from Karen Johnson who said, "Your proposal is an extraordinary opportunity to help our citizens and businesses. It seems well thought out to help many citizens in our town and I urge all." "Please help me, generous thing possible in a time of crisis. I'm definitely in support of this proposal. We've helped other businesses along the way, let's help them now." Those are the only, those are the only reactions that I have gotten and no calls.
Okay. So I assume we would take a motion from here?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anything further from anybody? Danny?
Approved.
Ed?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Kathy?
Approve.
Mark?
Approved.
Paul?
Approved.
And Peter approves. Thank you, Sue.
I have one other, Nancy Minnet just sent in a comment that said, "This proposal is a compassionate, caring and appropriate response for Bucksport's businesses and our most vulnerable citizens during these unprecedented days. Thank you, Sue, for your leadership and to the council for your positive responses to this proposal. I am grateful to live in this community, leading in such a caring, compassionate and responsible manner to meet the needs of all its citizens." Michael Gross from Verona Wine &amp; Design just said, "We at Verona Wine &amp; Design have submitted our disaster relief application to the SBA and also contacted our bank. To date, we have heard no response. The uncertainty is very unsettling and stressful. If we were to receive support from the town now, we would be more certain that, one, county of Bucksport values our presence in the community. And, two, we could relax some with respect to where the capital is going to come from to carry us until reopening. We would be extremely appreciated for the support and could look forward to planning for a promising future. Best from Mike from Michael and Colin Gross."
Thanks. And finally, the last thing I do is echo Ed. If anybody does need assistance, please reach out. I know Sue and Rich, especially at the town, are working overtime along with everybody in the town. But I know that they may not be there all the time, but reach out either through an email, through a phone call, and we will all try to put you in touch with the right people or do what we can for you. So I thank the council, I thank Sue, I thank Rich, I thank everybody at the town for for doing what they do during this time and hopefully this little bit will help. Our next items are agenda items. The first one is to approve, resolve 202043 PayRec 33 for the sewer treatment plant. How would the council like to?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Danny?
Approved.
Ed?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Kathy?
Approve.
Mark?
Approved.
Paul?
Approved.
And Peter approves. I'll wait for the eight o'clock whistle to blow. The next item is to approve, resolve 202044 to award the gas diesel bid for the 2020-21 fiscal year. Sue sent that out in an email. How would the council like to go?
Ed Rankin, I have a question here.
Yeah, if we can get a motion first, Ed, and then we'll.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll go around, just like you did before, and if you got a question before you want to vote, go ahead. Danny, you got any questions?
No.
Ed?
Yeah, I'm just clarifying, it says the resolves to award Dead River and they, I saw that they are cheaper on the diesel, but a little bit more on the gas. Just from my knowledge, how, why is that? Why is it just directed towards Dead River? Just not criticizing, just asking a question.
Sue?
Our largest purchase of diesel, 63,000 gallons a year. Our gas purchase is, somebody needs to jump in.
Kathy, you need to mute your mic when you get up, okay?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Anyway, the gas purchase is more in the 15,000 gallon range. And when bidders bid on these, if you don't pick both, there's a five cent adjustment on the other, on the bid. And since diesel is our biggest consumption and it provides us with a known output, we have traditionally gone with a low bidder on diesel to secure the bat price. And gas, which is rack plus, is a lower expenditure anyway.
Thank you, I just needed clarification, that's what I assumed, but.
Yep. Jim, do you have any questions on this?
Nothing, no.
Kathy?
All set.
Mark?
All set.
Paul?
All set.
All right, we'll go around for a vote. Dan?
Approved.
Ed?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Kathy?
Approve.
Mark?
Approved.
Paul?
Approved.
And Peter approves. Our next item is to approve, resolve 202045 to contribute 2,500 to the Four Port Bicentennial Group. That is still going on as of right now. So we had the presentation last week from, oh, the last time we met from Dick Campbell, so. And they had asked for a week's help with a number for them, so take a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, Dan?
No.
Ed?
One just minor concern that with all this going on, again, the unknown, if this doesn't happen, do we get that money back?
I'll let Sue answer that, but my answer would be yes.
I received a question earlier from Council of Bissonnette, who I think was prepared to make an amendment to this resolve that makes it contingent, received it contingent on the event going forward, that if it doesn't happen, they don't get the money.
Paul?
Yeah, that's my only question too, if we want to vote to amend the motion, I'd certainly be in favor of that.
Who did the motion come from initially, Danny?
It's either Jim or I, Jacob was one of us, but I couldn't tell who said it first. You're on mute.
I put you, Danny.
Okay. So, so you, I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to amend that to, in, with the contingency that if it does not go on, that the money comes back to the, comes back to the town.
Will you second that, Jim?
I'll second it.
Okay. Ed, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Yep. Jim, any questions?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Mark?
No.
Paul?
None.
I figured not since it was your amendment. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Danny, how do you vote?
Approved.
Ed?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Kathy?
Approve.
Mark?
Approve.
Paul?
Approved.
And Peter approves. And the last agenda item is to approve, resolve 202046 to update the 2021 budget meeting dates. My assumption is, Sue, that we may be operating like this if things are still going the way they're going. So is that, is that going to be the understanding? We hope to meet in person, but if we have to, we'll do it this way?
That's exactly right.
Take a motion?
Take a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Danny, any questions?
Nope.
Ed?
No.
Jim?
So the ordinances that state that all this has to be done by a certain deadline have been thrown out? We're not going to worry about those?
The deadline for adoption of the budget is the third week in June. And the proposal before you has the adoption of the budget the fourth week in June. So they, and two years ago, when the state, or three years ago, when the state didn't know how much funding it was going to do for education, the council voted at that time to wait until after that date to finalize their budget because they weren't sure of the circumstances. That's all I can tell you, that the technical date is the third week in June. I agree with that. The fact that it's the fourth week in order to accommodate this state of emergency would be up to the council to determine if you want to move it back a week and meet that, that third week in June deadline.
Does that answer your question, Jim?
The capital improvement budget, that's all going to be at a later time. We haven't seen that yet.
Haven't seen any of the budget yet.
I'm aware.
Does that answer your question, Jim?
I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
All set.
Mark?
I'm good.
Paul?
No questions.
Sue, any questions from the TV land?
None.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget meeting dates. Danny?
Approved.
Ed?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Kathy?
Approve.
Mark?
Approved.
Paul?
Approved.
And Peter approves. The next items are appointments, resignations, and I think, are these all appointments, Jacob?
That is correct.
All right, so we have Deputy Harbor Master David Grant. And Sue, maybe you could address this. Are these all folks that are basically returning folks, including the ballot clerks? Just if you know that?
Yes. These are all reappointments, but I've had prior appointments to these positions.
All right.
No new ones there.
So the first one, and if it's okay with the council, I'm just going to go, actually, we'll just do them one at a time. Deputy Harbor Master David Grant, term expires March 31st, 2021. Danny, any questions?
No.
Ed?
No.
Jim?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Mark?
No.
Paul?
No.
The second is Harbor Master Michael Ornsby, term expires March 31st, 2021. Danny?
Nope.
Ed?
Nope.
Jim?
Nope.
Kathy?
No.
Mark?
No.
And Paul?
No.
Third is Registrar of Voters Jacob Graham, term expires December 31st, 2020. Danny?
Nope.
Ed?
Nope.
Jim?
Nope.
Kathy?
No.
Mark?
No.
Paul?
No.
And then ballot clerks, term expires March 31st, 2022. I apologize on names beforehand. Jacqueline Hunt, Helen Wardwell. I apologize on names beforehand. Um, Jacqueline Hunt, Helen Wardwell, Brenda Overlock, Linda Jellison, Amy Lozier, Judith Finley, Rachel Allen, David Weida, Linda Pluard, Diane White, Donna Smith, Ann Holmes, L. Donna Hoffman, Susan Peterson, Paula S. Bartley, Brooke Minner, Michelle Rhodes, Roxanne Clapper. Danny?
Nope.
Ed?
Nope.
Jim?
No.
Kathy?
There seems to be some additional ones on the second page.
Thank you. Barbara Ashy, Julie Hersom, Pam Fleming, and Nancy McInerney. I'll go back. Danny?
Nope, I'm good.
Ed?
I'm good.
Jim?
No.
Kathy?
All set.
Mark?
No.
And Paul?
No.
I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All these people are willing to serve, correct, Sue?
That is correct.
All right. Uh, we'll go around the room. Danny, approve or disapprove?
Uh, abst- abstain.
Thank you. And you're abstaining because of, uh, your father, correct? Thank you. Ed?
Approve.
Jim?
Approve.
Kathy?
Approve.
Mark?
Approve.
Paul?
I'm gonna have to abstain as well. One of the, um, ballot clerks, uh, reports directly to me, um, at work. I've already talked to her about this. I have no questions about her, her ability to perform the task. I just don't like the appearance of it.
I will approve also. So Jacob, we have five, uh, affirmatives and two abstentions. You all okay with that?
I am good. Thank you.
All right. Next item is approval of quick claims or discharges. We don't have any. Um, item eleven is the town manager report.
I apologize in advance that I'm reading from my phone because I didn't print it off, but first is road proposal information contained with this report, and you will be getting the backup. This additional information on what the cost would be to do the same roads identified in the original road bond proposal that was voted on in November two thousand nineteen as reclaiming the binder surface and as rebuild with excavation of the road base. Original proposal estimate cost is two million five eight five four eight six. The recap claim grade binder surface cost is estimated at five million three sixty-one two seventy-six. The rebuild cost is estimated at nine million one sixty-one three seventy. This is just for the roads identified in the original bone bond proposal. It does not include all of the roads in Bucksport. Uh, we, uh, Public Safety Director David has made arrangements along with Ellsworth Police and Lake Park Sheriff for location for any public safety personnel quarantine that includes resulting from COVID-nineteen exposure to prevent exposure to their families. And when it comes to, um, oh, okay. I wanna thank our local businesses who are able to still keep operating, which meets the essential needs of the people of this community. They're doing an awesome job on the front line to this pandemic and it is really appreciated. And when it comes to thank you, we all owe big ones to Bucksport Public Safety, police, fire, EMS, and this back. They are doing a tremendous job in an increasingly risky environment for them personally. It's critical that we keep them safe and healthy so that they can continue to respond, ask for assistance from our residents. We have approved an updated budget schedule and will be proceeding an updated budget within a week that will continue to have option that keeps intact our service delivery system. There is a future beyond this pandemic. It is important that Bucksport continues to move forward in a positive way towards that future. Our staffing will continue to be someone at the other end of the phone for all of the departments during this pandemic. Our current staffing model is consistent with the standards set by the governor's order, and we will continue to operate in that fashion. In the past two weeks, the town office has fielded four hundred and two calls as of four-thirty this afternoon. I'm pleased to report that we have been able to help all four hundred and two in some fashion, many of which were just wanting information on what the current reality means to them. So many people have just been grateful that someone answered our phone. I've already had some people reach out who are willing to help with the meal delivery program if it is approved by the town council. I am taught, and as always, by the giving community spirit of the people in this community. We have been blessed with donations of personal protective equipment from Keith Byers, Chris Jerome, Dr. Donald A. Hearn, a local dentist. It's imperative that we keep our police, our public safety personnel safe so that they continue, can continue to do their work to protect the lives and safety of the people of our community. The state of Maine has received its last strategic stockpile, and state emergency management is no longer ordering, so it is up to local providers to secure their own, help their own equipment. Public safety leadership is working tirelessly to secure additional P P P and our other people on their A reminder, if you are just returning to Bucksport from another state where you have wintered or visited, please self-quarantine for fourteen days before interacting with people and businesses in Bucksport. If you have friends and family here, have them drop off your needed supplies without face-to-face contact. Tojos is offering delivery on Fridays from its Seersport grocery store as well. And for visitors to the area, please follow these same guidelines. If you do not have friends or family to drop off supplies, call Tojos for delivery or call us at the town office Monday through Thursday from seven thirty to five thirty, and that will help you figure out something. People here are not mean and negative, but many are concerned about their health and the health of their loved ones. If you are here to visit and you are following the fourteen day quarantine protocols, people will respect your efforts. Also, a reminder to our residents, there are many people in Maine from out of state as visiting nurses and medical personnel who have come here to help. Many rental cars have out of state plates but are being operated by Maine residents who are your friends and neighbors. I have my son's medically licensed plated car in my garage where it has been for more than a month because he borrowed my husband's truck. He's not here, but his vehicle is. Do not jump to conclusions. Please continue to be the same caring, kind Bucksport residents that I have always known you to be. This community is characterized by kindness. We should not let anything, even a pandemic, change the character of who we are.
Thanks, Sue. Jacob, do we have any, we don't have any hearings or licenses?
That's correct.
Uh, next is, um, discussion items not on the agenda. Sue, do you have anything out there from the public that wasn't on the agenda?
Hold on. From Kay and Company Salon, in regards to money towards small businesses, I thank you for everything you guys are doing. In the honor of a new hair salon, this will help greatly. This mandated shutdown of all salon has left seven of us without incomes and no opportunity of unemployment at this point. We appreciate everything the town is doing, and I hope to be in a position to pass it, pay it forwards. The only one that I, that's the only one that I have so far.
All right. Danny, anything not on the agenda?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to quickly mention, um, our, our school system has, has been thrown into, like a lot of, a lot of people have, been thrown into a situation where they're told, all of a sudden, you now have to teach this way. Um, and I feel that our school system not only stepped up, um, to take on that and, and be pretty successful at it, um, but they're also supporting our, um, our kids at home. Um, they're delivering meals, which put people on the front lines in the buses, delivering, delivering food to people, um, daily. Um, administration, teachers, techs, um, other, other essential staff that are in the buildings are, are putting themselves out there uh, for the kids and, and especially the parents at home who now, um, have to continue their student's education with the help from somebody over a computer. Uh, that can be really stressful, uh, and we're, we're seeing that where I work. Um, but I'm, you know, here in Bucksport, um, the information has been fantastic. I've been in, in pretty close communication with, with some of the administration, and they're, they're really working hard to make sure this works. And, and I just want to put out there that I really appreciate it, what they're doing. I know that, um, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot on them, and, and so thank you if you guys are watching.
Thanks, Danny. Ed?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say something quickly. Um, everyone, everyone involved that works for the town, or first responders, transfer station, town office, um, as well as the RSU, like Dan mentioned, everyone's doing a great job, and, because this is, this is new to everybody. Nobody, well, I'm sure there are people that have had training for this, but I don't believe anyone dealing with this has had training for it. Um, and with the, with the state's rules, rules and not real well-defined rules in some cases, I'd ask and encourage people, I feel like the, uh, police department's kinda caught in the middle where there's no exact guidelines of what they're to do. So I would just encourage people to just follow the rules and stay home unless you're out doing something, going to the grocery store, doing as we're told. Make their job easier, and I don't really want to put them in harm's way and put them in the middle of it either. That was it. Everybody take care and be safe.
Thanks. Jimmy?
Yeah, I think that the, uh, EMTs gotta be trained to, uh, stay in their shop when they're on duty, not down at the store without protective gear on. I think that's probably something that needs to be addressed. And, uh, I think probably as a councilman, I probably should have, uh, been brought to the front way back in the middle of March when this first started out, instead of being given a, uh, one paragraph thing on it on the twelfth, and then on the fourteenth, a thing saying, we're not gonna be able to meet. I think at that time, we should have been able to meet, get this all online, what we wanted done, how we wanted it done, and go from there.
Thanks. Kathy?
Um, I just wanna say thank you to all the employees for the town, um, for what they're doing each and every day, putting their own lives on the line. Um, and just be safe, be careful, and thank you.
Mark?
I guess the only thing I'd add, you know, it's, I'm proud to be part of this community.
Paul?
Uh, no, I do have something to add. I will say that I will go back towards what I said earlier in regards to proactivity. And I support every decision that the town manager has made in regards to that effect, um, and her, uh, how she's communicated that as best as she could in, in a, in a brand-new situation. Um, this, this pandemic has not reached its apex. Um, it is going to get worse. Um, and I think, in, at the very least, we have done whatever we can, um, to, uh, keep that at bay here, um, as, as best as we can. So, uh, I'm fully supportive of, uh, the decisions that, uh, the town manager has, um, made and, and asked for input on, on that front.
Thanks. Um, you know, when the law got changed and we were allowed to do this, I know this was brought up i- in, by the last council to try to do this. Um, and it was kind of thrown to us to do. Um, I wanna give a shout to Jim Morrell, um, for putting this together in a short amount of time to make sure that this works. Hopefully, the folks that have been watching, um, value the input. Um, we're absolutely right. We need to meet as a council, um, whatever that platform is, to be able to continue the town's business. And, and how we meet is not as important as meeting. Um, be, getting together, talking things out the best way that we can to make sure that, um, we can continue on and, and do the good work. And I think, you know, this experiment, I, I, I hope worked. I think it worked from where I'm sitting. Um, hopefully, it works from where Bales was sitting. I think we, we accomplished what we needed to accomplish tonight. Um, I think when we look at, at, at scheduling another meeting on the next item, um, that we will, uh, probably end up doing this again. So with that, I'll move on to the next, um, public hearings or committee assignments or scheduling. Jacob? Sue, did we have any thought on doing this on the twenty-third of April, uh, to get back on schedule?
Yep. My thought was that we would schedule our next meeting for the fourth, um, Thursday of the month to get back on our, our regular meeting schedule, and that we would also, since we're in, um, the virtual reality, that we would schedule committee meetings as needed prior to that. The, um, additional information on the road proposal that had been requested that I have alluded to tonight should be, um, an additional discussion. The, um, the solar committee, we have to figure a way for them to, um, have access to be able to meet in regard to these things. Uh, if items come up, the, um, the committees need to, to reestablish a virtual presence prior to a council meeting. And, um, and I want to take a minute to apologize if I have, have left any councilor feeling that I was not communicating sufficiently. I have attempted to, to ask for input on any item that is beyond my authority as the town manager. And if I have not done that, uh, thank you, Jim, for bringing that to my attention. It was not my intent at any time to leave the council in the dark or not knowing what actions that the town was taking.
So we will set our, what do we need for a committee, Sue? You said we need infrastructure and solar for the twenty-third?
I, I think if we had infrastructure for the twenty-third and we perhaps scheduled solar on a different night so that we could utilize some of this technology. Yeah. But I will, I will forward the, um, some options to the solar group and see what, you know, what they can set up in order to do that. Because I know that there is interest from that group in continuing to move this discussion forward.
All right. Infrastructure, half an hour or an hour?
How long do you think you wanna talk about roads?
Who's the chairman of it?
That would define the.
That would be me, Peter. Um, I would, I would say slate it for an hour.
Okay.
Okay. So we will do infrastructure at six o'clock on the twenty-third? And regular council meeting at seven o'clock on the twenty-third under this format?
Sounds good.
Is everybody okay with that? Danny?
Good to me, yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right. Jacob, any other meetings we've gotta set up?
Not that I know of. If I could just add, Mayor Stewart, um, we talked about Jim, uh, and his ability to set up. I also just wanna, uh, add that he's done a tremendous job at getting the office staff, uh, the ability to work from home. It's very helpful to all of us. Uh, and I would also say that Town Manager LaSard, I mean- It's very helpful to all of us. Uh, and I would also say that Town Manager Lassard, I mean, you all know the foreign, I, I live across the river, uh, Town Manager Lassard went out of the way for myself and another staff member to, uh, deliver the equipment that was needed to our homes. Uh, and I, I just wanna point that out to you and, uh, just implore, uh, Sue and Jim, the work that they have done and how they have stepped up. It really is, uh, makes me proud to work for the town. That's all.
Thank you. Item fifteen is adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'm gonna go around the room. Danny?
Approve.
Ed?
Approve.
Jim?
Approved.
Kathy?
Approve.
Mark?
Approve.
Paul?
Approved.
And Peter approves. I wanna thank everybody for our first, uh, virtual town council meeting in the town of Bucksport. Our meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everybody, and stay safe.
Yep, good night all.